We don't have a chair or a vice chair. So to open up the meeting, we need someone to designate a pro tem.
Would everybody like for me to serve as pro tem?
I was gonna ask for a roll call, see who was there or not.
Yes, let's uh, can we do that, Fay? Before we start the any meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm good. Uh, Randy Rickert.
Here.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Matt, I'm sorry, Mansfield.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Jose Valipondo.
Here.
Lynda Newton Curtis is absent. And Laney is no longer with the commission. And Elise Stefan is absent.
I'm fine with Chris doing pro tem chair.
I second that.
Chris, can you go ahead and uh, open up the meeting?
Absolutely. I hereby, oh, excuse me, I hereby open the planning commission meeting on July tenth, twenty twenty-five, Public Safety Building in Newburgh, Oregon. May we call, we've already called the meeting to order, we've already taken a roll call. So at this time, we will talk about um, vice chair. And in the historical outline of our criteria, uh, page eleven of nineteen four point four, Rule of Election of Chair and Vice Chair. You normally have to serve a few years before you sit in that seat. But in twenty twenty-one, during the pandemic and people falling off, we, I do believe we changed that to one year minimum. And I would like to know if uh, now Randy Rickert, when did you start? Commissioner Rickert?
There you go.
I am not one year in, I I believe, I I wanna say October, maybe, yeah.
Okay, so ten twenty-four.
I think, I think Jose is before that.
Yeah, and I wa- I was thinking uh, yeah, Jose is actually got seniority. Um, would you accept vice chair, uh, Commissioner Valipandro?
Um, yes, I will if I can get our guidance and I will definitely take it.
Okay, um, doing so, um, okay. Would like, the commission like to vote on this, please? May I have a voice vote? Or actually a name vote? Fay, please?
There you go.
Alright, so you're looking for Fay to read out all the names?
Um, no, um, okay, do we have a second on electing Commissioner Jose Valipandro to vice chair?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dale. May I get a name vote, please?
Randy Rickert?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Matthew Mansfield?
Yes.
Jose Valipandro? Jose?
Sorry, yes, it wasn't coming up.
That's like a pass.
Thank you, guys.
Wonderful, um, congratulations for new vice chair Jose Valipandro. Um, thank you for your stepping forward into this position. As we move forward, um, are there any public comments at this time? Do you see anybody in-house or online, Fay?
Hi, no one's in the building and I do not see anyone in the Zoom.
Okay, then we will be moving forward to the consent calendar. And the first thing is our planning commission meeting minutes. Um, do any of the commissioners want to give me a, an approval on that? As written or any other comments? Alright, then Planning Commissioner Wright moves to approve as written the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. I need a second.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Other commissioners? Commissioner Valipandro?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Planning Commission Meeting Minutes passed for June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, thank you. At this time, um, can we have a staff report, please?
We need to actually open up the quasi-
Never mind, yes. Um, at this time, we will open up a, the meeting for a legislative meeting um, on July tenth, twenty twenty-five for-
It's actually, sorry, Chris, it's actually a quasi judicial meeting.
Is it list, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was listed as a legislative meeting.
That's afterwards.
Uh, and I, okay, so our first hearing will be the vacation rental home? Is that correct on the agenda?
That is correct.
Okay, and I call to order the quasi judicial public hearing of July tenth, twenty twenty-four on PLNG twenty-five dash five for a vacation rental home at six one three West First Street, Yamhill County, Newburgh, Oregon. And do we have any uh, at this time, I also need to call for any abstentions, bias, expertise, contact, or objections to jurisdiction? Hearing none, can we have the legal announcement read by one of our staff, please?
ORS one nine seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed, this means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issues which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUPA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties on an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUPA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to follow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue for includes and action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Fay. Um, the purpose of this meeting were be for the applicants and owner to uh, state their uh, state their application. But before that, planning committer, commissioners are to review, have reviewed the application, must hear, discuss, and deliberate public testimony and make a motion of the matter and then vote. The testifying procedure will be the applicants or other proponents for fifteen minutes. Any primary opponents, um, also fifteen minutes. First proponents get one minute, second undecided proponents also get five minutes after each speaker. And the planning commissioners may ask questions or clarification at the end of any public testimony. The owner applicant has a cha- so the cha- and then the owner applicant has a chance for rebuttal. And then, staff, can you go ahead and start your report, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Um, good evening, Commissioner, I'm Leanne Wagner, one of the planners on staff. And tonight, I will be presenting the case for a conditional use permit for a vacation rental at six thirteen West First Street. I enter the entire staff report for P O N G dash twenty-five dash five into the record. The owner and applicant for this request is Jerry Bartels. His request is to turn his three-bedroom, single-family home on West First Street into, in Newburgh, into a short-term vacation rental. The zoning for this area is R two, medium-density residential. And the applicable code portion for review of his request can be found in sections fifteen point two-two-five point zero-six-zero and fifteen point four-four-five point three hundred to three fifty of the Newburgh Municipal Code. Can y'all still hear me? Okay, great. Okay. This next slide is an aerial image of the residence showing its frontage onto West First Street and its adjacency to West Sheridan Street and Highway ninety-nine West. Next is a clip from the zoning map showing the home's context within the medium-density zoning district R two, which reaches to the east and southwest of the property. And likewise, its adjacency to the community commercial zone to the south and to Yamhill County further west. The utilities map shows the house is connected to the major water and sewer lines running south of the home along West First Street. And the city's GIS also indicates that a stormwater inlet grate is located at the southwest corner of the subject property. Lastly, is observed that the property is served by overhead power lines. Next, looking at the criteria under which to assess the request by the applicant, we find the code sections mentioned previously. And importantly, section fifteen point two-two-five point zero-six-zero A in regard to the character of the dwelling in relation to the rest of the neighborhood. The single-family dwelling is a three-bedroom house with a generous driveway for use by the potential short-term renters. These characteristics are in keeping with the immediate neighbors to the east, west, and north. Furthermore, it is noted that this property is a short distance from downtown Newburgh and local amenities and would therefore meet the code requirements stated in section fifteen point two-two-five point zero-six-zero B. And lastly, this section states in criterion C that the proposed use is consistent with this code. This includes Newburgh Municipal Code Chapter fifteen point four-four-five, Article seven, which we will look at next. The highlights for this section of code are as follows. First street is, two, that the dwelling must be registered with the city and the owner pay a transient lodging tax. Uh, and the owner has indicated that he will register with the city and pay the required tax. Third, maintain standards, uh, the owner is providing four off-street parking spaces, occupancy for six guests, and that's no more than two persons uh, for each bedroom. Waste collection on each Monday and provide RVs or any other temporary, or will not provide uh, RVs or any other temporary shelters on the premises. And lastly, posting that the owners acknowledge their responsibility to post contact information for themselves, the police, vacation rental standards, maximum, excuse me, maximum occupancy and Monday, that's the correct day, as the garbage pickup day. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-five dash zero-seven with conditions approving conditional use permit, PLNG dash twenty-five dash five, that should be a five, uh, for the vacation rental home at six thirteen West First Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three two one nine B A zero one nine zero zero.
Thank you, Leanne. I appreciate that. You have a wonderful voice, by the way. Um, you're welcome. At this time, um, do any of the planning commissioners have any brief questions or clarifications for staff at this time? Hearing none, I open public testimony um, for the applicants, are the, is Jerry Bartel available?
Uh, the applicant is online.
Okay.
I'm going to- I think it's, uh, you speak. Oh, there he is. There he is.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Mr. Bartels.
Good evening, uh, thank you for uh, letting me uh, speak here. Uh, I don't think there's a lot to add, I think the staff report was uh, good, complete. Uh, my wife and I bought this house about five years ago, principally because it is next door to our daughter and grandson, grandchildren. And uh, this provides us with uh, with a place to stay when we are in Newburgh visiting. We have spent a considerable amount of time and effort uh, in cleaning up the property, painting and doing landscaping, cleaning up, taking out dead trees and a lot of other things. At this point, we will use that house for a vacation house for us when we're visiting our children. We're not going to be there all the time, so we would like to be able to rent this house as an Airbnb to recoup a little bit of money to help pay for the taxes and the utilities and just to assist with the upkeep of the house. Uh, that's our reason for uh, this request is to be able to do that properly. And so if there are any questions, uh, that's about all I have, really.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Bartel?
Commissioner Mansfield here. Uh, quick question, in our communications about uh, vacation rentals, uh, there's been a curiosity about how they're gonna be managed when the ownership is uh, away. Uh, are you planning to have someone local be the point person to maintain the property while you're not there?
Uh, yes, we have, we are in contract with Vacasa, uh, which is a large nationwide rental management company that manages this sort of properties. They have people in the area, they are managing other uh, properties in Newburgh. So they do have people uh, locally, uh, I don't know if they're in Newburgh or, you know, might be in Dundee, but but we do have a local management company there to take care of things. They will also be doing the thing, the cleaning, uh, re- you know, new towels and all those sorts of things, uh, also.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any questions uh, from public, Fay? In the room or online?
Let me look really quick, no one in the room and, let me see. I don't believe I see anyone, nope, no one in the um, virtual.
Okay, and I think all the commissioners have had their time. Alright, at this time, I will close this portion of the quasi judicial public hearing. And may I have final comments from staff and recommendation?
Um, my recommendation is um, that the commission moved to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-five dash zero-seven with conditions approving conditional use permit, P O N G dash twenty-five dash five for a vacation rental home at six thirteen West First Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R three two one nine B A zero one nine zero zero.
Thank you, Leanne. At this time, the planning commissioners will deliberate. At this time, I will ask any commissioners if they have any concerns, anything that they would like to bring forward in discussion. Hearing none. Planning Commissioner Wright motions to approve Planning Commission Order twenty twenty-five dash seven and order approving conditional use permit, P O N G dash twenty-five dash five and exhibits for a vacation rental home at six one three West First Street, Yamhill County, O- Oregon. Tax lot, R three two one nine B A zero one nine zero zero. Do I have a second?
No, second. Yeah, Commissioner Mansfield, second.
Thank you, commissioners, I have a second, we will go ahead and take a role, uh, roll call vote, please?
Randy Rickert?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Matthew Mansfield?
Yes.
Jose Valipandro?
Yes.
That's it.
Passes unanimously, um, congratulations.
Yeah.
Next, on the agenda, will be legislative hearing.
Oh.
I'm sorry, uh, go ahead, Fay.
Oh, no, sorry, it wasn't for you, I didn't.
Okay, I'm trying to get back to where I was, um, okay. Alright, next will be a legislative public hearing on the review and, review and providing feedback on the scope of the amendments to the Newburgh Municipal Code, Title fifteen Development Code and one provision of Title twelve Streets and Sidewalks. May you go ahead and give your report, staff, thank you. Oh, never mind, um, I call for ab- abstentions, bias, expertise, contact, objections to jurisdiction at this time?
I shouldn't, no need to call for that.
Oh, we don't do that on the uh, let just, never mind. Huh, cuz it's on our legislative public hearing packet in exhibit one, we might need to take that out. Okay, go ahead, staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll be brief this evening, um, and we apologize for the mislabeling of that item, it is a work session this evening. Uh, this is part of the annual code maintenance program that the planning division uh, carries out in uh, coordination with building and engineering. And uh, during the course of the year, the staff in their use and application of the code and feedback from applicants, uh, we maintain a log that identifies uh, parts of the code that are in need of correction or clarification uh, or changes in state law that we are required to adhere to. And so these are uh, primarily maintenance updates to the code. Uh, however, there may be some policy changes. And the purpose of the work session this evening is uh, to have the plant, well, for the planning commission to become familiar with the scope of the changes that we're um, considering and planning on bringing forward to you for a public hearing in, in September. And so, as those of you who were on the commission last year may recall, uh, we brought a code maintenance package to you for a work session and then we went immediately to a public hearing. Uh, this year, rather than drafting code language for a work session, we've, we've basically summarized uh, the, the concepts and, and the purpose and need for these code changes for you to uh, peruse and to ask questions and, and if, if needed, to direct staff to come back with more information for your next meeting, uh, where we, well, we, we will bring draft code language for you to review uh, before you go to a public hearing in September. So it's really a three-step process. This evening, we have, I think, twenty-five code concepts for you. In August, uh, we'll come back with code language and then again in September, it's a public hearing. So, this evening, I have, um, our staff are here and I'll just um, mention who's here in the room, you've already heard from Leanne. Uh, we also have Jeremiah Chromy, Associate Planner, and our Senior Engineer, Red Music. Uh, and we're all um, uh, sort of at the ready to answer any questions you might have about these code changes. So, without further ado, I think what we'd like to do is just go through these very high-level and it certainly stop, stop us if you have any questions. Uh, we'll try to highlight the ones that we think are more significant or potentially, you know, have policy implications. A lot of these, as you may have noticed, are corrections or, or edits and are not um, changes in the substance of the code. So just starting at the, at the top of page three in the staff report, um, the state, and there are a number of places where the state preempts what's um, cities may regulate or, or require. Um, has told us that when we define family, for example, in the context of a single-family dwelling or multifamily dwelling, uh, we're not permitted to define that based on um, blood relationship or sort of lineage, lineage of a family, but instead households are how, uh, we're to refer to that. We can maintain the language that we have in the code, but we just need to change the definition to where it references currently one or more persons related by blood, marriage, et cetera. And so we'll be coming back to you with some proposed language on that, should you have any questions, let us know. Uh, the next item is on the definition of cottage cluster and, and this is a conflict uh, between the definition of cottage cluster and the development standards where in one place, it says that the cottage cluster may not exceed nine hundred square feet, and another, it says it's uh, what does it say, it cannot exceed nine hundred feet, and in another place says less than nine hundred square feet. So, uh, we intend to clarify that and make it consistent so that it's not more than nine hundred square feet is that is the operative standard in code. Uh, the next item is code adjustments for lot coverage, so the um, the ordinance does allow for code adjustments of up to, I think, twenty-five percent, and someone correct me if I'm wrong on that, to lot coverage. Two percent, excuse me, there are twenty-five percent is for setbacks, two percent is for lot coverage, that is Jeremiah, thank you. And there's the language in the code that al- also refers to parking coverage, so we regulate maximum lot coverage by buildings or structures and we also regulate parking coverage or areas that are covered by surface parking. And we believe the intent is to uh, allow that two percent adjustment to- And we believe the intent is to, uh, allow that two percent adjustment to either or both. Uh, but the heading in that, in that section, it makes it unclear. So what we're proposing to do is clarify. Uh, the next item on sign permit applications. Uh, currently, the planning division processes signed permits as simply by reviewing it as a building permit. There really isn't anything else to require um, other than what would ordinarily be submitted for a building permit. So what we're proposing to do is identify signed permits in the development code as those types, as among those types of type one reviews that go straight to a building permit. It is still a type one review, but it doesn't, uh, require a separate application and fee, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Mansfield, uh, apologize for negligence, but what type of signs are we talking about that mean permitting?
Oh, uh, well, all types of signs except for those that the code defines as being exempt. And maybe some, one of our planners can give us some examples of what's exempt. I think you're allowed to have a certain size sign on your residential lot that's not more than.
That's, that's fun passing around the laptop here in the room for, for those people online. Um, so what doesn't require sign permits, stuffs comply with the code, but minor freestanding signs, which are typically three feet in residential zones, six feet in other zones, minor attached size, attached signs, typically the same thing. There's portable signs like the A frames you see, um, they should meet standards, but that's kind of the, the, the real small signs are typically what doesn't require permits.
Thank you, Jeremiah. So, uh, the proposed code change here would not change any of what Jeremiah just described, those signs that are currently exempt would continue to be exempt, and those that require a permit will continue to require a permit. What we're trying to do is streamline the process for those that do require a permit. Uh, multifamily design review. Now, uh, this is an instance where the state, um, defines what, uh, those types of applications that are to go through across a quasi judicial land use review versus those that go through what's referred to as a limited land use decision or limited land use review. And, uh, for uses that are permitted outright, and housing particularly is what the estate's interest is in this. For housing that is permitted outright, um, is identified in our code by P or permitted, um, we review those or we are to review those through the type two process. Um, for housing that is allowed only with a conditional use permit, for example, an apartment project like the one that the commission reviewed recently on Springbrook, uh, because that was in a zone, that was in a commercial zone, the housing was allowed only with a conditional use permit. That will continue to be reviewed through a type three process. It's only those uses that are permitted outright in, in a residential zone, for example, that we're, um, required to process through the limited land use, uh, review or type two. So that is a, I mean, that is a policy change, and it would involve removing multifamily dwellings in the R two RP and C four, C four zones, um, from type three review and and by default, they would be reviewed as a type two. Uh, however, we're not, we don't have local control over that. It's preempted by the state. And in fact, when we went through the code maintenance process last year, D L C D commented on that package and they, they, they flagged that and they said that, um, that's something that we would be expected to, to rectify, even though it wasn't within the scope of our package last year, and they allowed us to continue with, with that proposal, the expectation is that we'll rectify that. So moving on to the, the next page, the top of page four. And this is one that I'll hand off to Planner Leanne, uh, pertains to landscape plans.
Okay, um, so currently our site design review process, um, we're looking at landscape issues typically, um, well, most, most every project, there is some sort of landscape requirement. However, um, larger, especially commercial multifamily projects may have multiple landscape requirements and including existing conditions where an applicant may want to retain landscape features such as trees versus proposed conditions. And, um, for review of these items, staff is requesting that we add code language that would help applicants, um, demonstrate compliance with landscape requirements and, um, a way to show, um, existing features to remain. It's been my experience that something like a table summarizing that data is most efficient for review. So staff would like to capture some code language that would, um, request that from applicants um, during the site design review process.
Thank you, Leanne. Land Division Application Referral to a Public Hearing. This is another state requirement. And, uh, we have language in our code, and it's not uncommon that other jurisdictions have similar provisions to where an application that would be reviewed by staff, um, the director may, uh, refer it to the planning commissioner, elevate it in, in the review, um, in which case it would go from a type two review to a type three. And although that may be, um, in the, the applicant's interest, the applicant in, in some instances may want that if they're anticipating an appeal, for example, um, the state tells us that we're not, um, allowed to do that under O R S one ninety-seven, one ninety-five. Um, this was amended in two thousand twenty-four by Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven. And so what we are expected to do here is, uh, remove that provision that allows us to elevate it. Now, the public would still have the opportunity to appeal a decision that staff makes, and that would go to the planning commission, of course, but it doesn't allow staff, doesn't empower staff to automatically elevate it. Uh, the next item I'll refer to, um, our engineer Brett, and it pertains to substantial completion and bonding of public improvements.
So for, for this one, this is related to final plat submissions that currently there in the code has a provision there that allows for the city engineer to accept a bond for public improvements that are not substantially completed at the time of final plan approval. That's not in line with current practices or with the substantial completion code changes that are within the state that there's a reference within, um, back to fifteen two thirty-five sixty to land division requirements. There's for early issuance of building permits. So the recommendation we've kind of been looking at that is looking at either deleting that reference to a bond for sending's not substantially complete or adding a reference back to that other provision related to or release of building permits.
Thank you, Brett. Land Unit Development Design Standards. Um, commission does review land unit development applications, and uh, this is a section of code that is unclear, although, um, the, the interpretation or past practice is that applications for planning a development that are of single family for, uh, as opposed to multifamily development uh, would be subject to the same design standards that multifamily would be, uh, subject to, except for those standards that are not relevant to a subdivision, for example. So, uh, the design standards in fifteen two two oh six oh, um, cover things like, um, uh, landscaping, building design and orientation, connectivity, and a number of other things that you would expect to see in design review. And there's a, a sort of a discretionary process, and there's also a clear and objective, uh, process where applicants have to demonstrate that they've uh, attained a certain number of points and that, and then they comply. What we're asking or what we'll be proposing to do is clarify that all P U Ds regardless of um, dwelling type must comply with the relevant provisions of that, that code section. And there's a note, as you'll see in the, the right-hand column, that, uh, recent legislation, and, and I have to correct that, it's Senate Bill nine seven four, not nine six four from this legislative session, uh, will actually affect this, and it may affect other provisions in our code that regulate aesthetics. So for example, building design and orientation, um, uh, sort of design elements. So we're not proposing to implement that Senate bill at this time. What we're, what we're proposing to do is just update and clarify our code as we've current, as we've been using it and, and have the ability to apply the standards to all types of housing. Now, we anticipate, uh, probably over the next year or so, uh, the State Land Conservation and Development Commission will be promulgating rules to implement this bill, among others. And the likelihood is it will be coming back and there will be a requirement to make other changes, but we're not proposing those changes at this time. Next item is on childcare, and this is simply a, a, an update to the statute, the, the numbering of the statutes, and and we do cross-reference our code to that. Um, these are regulations for childcare operations, and we don't regulate that directly, but we do in court, we do incorporate those requirements by reference. So we need to update the numbering. Uh, next item is home occupations, and this is a, an internal conflict within the code, the, the zoning use table, the table that identifies the uses that are allowed in each zone. Expressly allows home occupations with more than one outside employee on the premises if you, um, receive conditional use permit approval. But there is a separate section of, of special use standards for home occupations that, uh, omit that or, or silent on it, and we need to make sure that the two are, are, uh, consistent. And so, uh, the proposal is to amend the special use standards to be consistent with that allowance of more than one outside employee for home occupation, provided it receives conditional use permit, uh, which would come before the planning commission. Next item I'm going to refer to Jeremiah. It's something that we've had some recent experience with, and we have a graphic that we'll share.
Okay, for those of you online, please let me know if there's a graphic that showed up for you. Oh, can we hear them?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, so the next one, um, is related to side-loaded garages, and I'll scroll down, I think, and see this house forty-three in the Springbrook District and our other districts. Currently, we have a twenty-foot garage setback in the regular code. Our garage setback says it's twenty feet to an entrance. Um, there's been some recent discussion related to garage setbacks and where that setback applies in basically all districts, including the Springbrooks District, a twenty-foot garage setback applies. Otherwise, you could have a fifteen-foot front setback in most cases unless it's higher density, a twelve-foot setback just for a regular structure on the site. So there was some consideration of allowing twenty-foot garage setback for these side-loaded garages to the closest access they take off of. So in this case, it'd be a shared driveway easement. Um, some considerations for this, and really it's a, be a minor policy question that, like, the commission to discuss and see if it's interested is you would have the garage facing the street. If there's any sort of window requirements or something that you'd be looking at um, on that currently, unless they're considered a detached middle housing unit, there's no window requirements on the building itself. So there's some different concepts with that that you could take up, but I would wanted to see if there was discussion around allowing a different side-loaded garage access and twenty feet, and I think that's more for maneuvering around the site and having better site layouts and access with these shared driveways.
So Jeremiah, currently, uh, that, that lot number forty-three would, it would meet today's standard if the garage were set back twenty feet from the street, even though the garage is entered from the side, it still has to comply with that twenty-foot setback.
Correct.
And, and your question is if we're allowing that garage to be closer within fifteen feet, for example, with the side-loading, are there any design improvements or enhancements that, that the commissioners would want us to?
Correct.
I might be a good place to pause, and if there are any comments on, on the idea, we can bring.
Commissioner Mansfield.
Uh, of that, oh, here, wrong one, Scott.
Just, Commissioner Mansfield here, just to make sure I understand. And as it currently with the marked fifteen-foot setback does not meet requirements?
That's correct. Well, the fifteen-foot setback would meet for a front yard setback, but the garage is twenty-foot requirement. And so with the garage setback, it would not meet current code without an adjustment or some other form of variance.
Commissioner Mansfield here again. So just to understand as well, uh, what, what spurred this request for a potential change? Has it been by builders or?
It's been by a builder. They're looking at this, trying to maximize lot size as, and trying to provide smaller units. While you see the, the four lots there with smaller houses, um, I believe this one's around fourteen hundred square feet or so. Um, and so that's, that's the prompt now. That's why I'm looking for plant commission's feedback, like if there's something that if that were to be allowed, if you want some sort of design standards, so you wouldn't have some sort of wall there for something that's not a detached quadplex that has the window standards, which I believe is fifteen percent of that facade that faces the street. So, uh, that help answer your question?
Yes, that does.
Yeah, Randy?
Some problems here. Uh, Christian Mansfield continuing. So, yeah, that sounds to me, you're proposing trying to, uh, gosh, facilitate this opportunity, uh, because the, the push for the twenty feet is really, uh, a matter of access for vehicles and maneuvering. That's why it's different from the fifteen feet traditionally. But we already have a stipula- stipulation for a, uh, uh, for a different structure that might match that where they have to have windows on the roadside uh, of the building. You said fifteen percent coverage?
Yes, it'd be fifteen percent of the street-facing façades would have to include windows or entrance doors unless they're have dwelling in between them, which in this case would not be. Um, so I'd be, that's for the detached quadplexes, but you could do something like that or something higher to try and generate some more um, glazing or other things to the street.
There's nothing in this situation.
This one is considered a detached quadplex. There's another area that currently that would not apply. So it's, it's a bit of a mix. But we could update it to people.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to me to try to match what we're asking other buildings and residences to comply with. I mean, a single-family home, do they need to make sure that there's fifteen percent road or, uh, coverage?
Not now, not currently, okay. Good enough.
Okay, so unless there are other comments or thoughts, if not, then what we would do is come back with uh, the draft language and perhaps some alternatives for the commission to consider and some graphics of what we're looking at.
Is, you're right.
Oh, wait.
You have a corner lot like this, uh, do they arbitrarily pick one or the other as the facing, the facing the street lot?
Can you repeat that, please?
Do they? Do they determine? Which way the uh, a corner lot, you consider the front facing? And does that have to have the standard? Or does the both sides of the building have to have the standard?
Oh, this is Jeremiah, Chromie. Um, so both the. On the corner lot, both the street sides would be front yard setbacks in this case, um, which. In this scenario would have a fifteen foot setback for the front yard and then the garage has a twenty foot. Front setback from this, basically the street it takes access from. Um. And way we've interpreted that based on our code, it's the entrance to the garage is a twenty foot setback. So. Like the the back of the garage there to the east would not. Have to meet the twenty foot, twenty foot setback. Just okay. But it would have to meet the fifteen foot setback.
Okay. All right, thank you for that clarification.
Uh, Commissioner Rickard, I want clarification on uh, something you just said about this. Uh, number forty-three. Uh, we're not talking, I'm not talking about the garage setback, but setbacks in general, you said there would be two front facing. Setbacks, is that correct? So there is no rear yard here in this situation?
So you'd have two fronts and two interior lots. So your fronts will be the street sides and then the two other lots, so the west and the north there would be interior lot lines, which have five foot setback.
Here and here, okay.
Like they're defining this big square is the lot. I enter, okay. So includes that portion of road. Is there back here?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Um, if anybody who actually wants to see a physical example of this, Crest Crestview. Um, right across from Providence, if you go down Jory Street. In between Kelchis, Kelchis and Jory. Um, has this exact setup and you can kind of physically look on what it looks like if you'd like.
This is this is Mr. Wright, I I have to check that the Crestview Crossroad was a planned unit development, which had different setback standards, so. That were quite reduced.
But yeah, there there we do, but you can kind of see how the alleyway is and kind of where people's driveways are. And the garage setbacks and how their front doors all face like towards a swale area or together. It's just that, not that they are exactly like, no. But it kind of gives you a little bit of a representation physically, kind of seeing something physical instead of on paper. It's just a nice visual. Of some of the things you guys were talking about when it comes to these high density. Uh. Fourplexes and things like that.
So we, yeah, we anticipate this will generate some discussion and. If we do bring this back as part of the code maintenance package, we'll be sure to include more examples. Um, but it sounds like there there wasn't any. Uh, objection to the staff exploring some design standards that would complement this if if we were to bring it forward, is that fair?
Absolutely. I would like to see that as well, options for the builders. Uh, things to help with our our housing here. Thank you, staff.
Commissioner Mansfield here, it's it sounds like if the point of the twenty feet from the garage. Setback is meant for maneuverability of vehicles, that it could just be better, sorry, not don't use the, but differently written. Uh, to to make it clear that that twenty foot setback should be in the path into the garage. So whichever way that garage is oriented, there needs to be at least a twenty foot setback.
That was our thinking as well, that we're really talking about the the drive aisle or the driveway or the sheer. Yeah. Home and drive, so street.
Just Mr. Mansfield, so everybody online too knows, our standard parking space is eighteen feet by nine feet. So and in single family cases, we require two off street parking spaces. Uh, which one of them can be in the garage, uh, one car garage is minimum ten by twenty inside dimension, two cars twenty by twenty. So in this case, typically what happens is the garage counts as the one space and then their driveway. Counts as their second space to meet the parking requirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Mansfield.
Good questions, good, good discussion. Uh, so picking up again at the top of. Page five. You you'll probably, you're probably familiar with, you know, the commercial corridor along ninety-nine and Portland Road. Uh, some of the properties have multiple. Uh, buildings, we've got shopping centers, we've got car dealerships and we have other sort of multi. Pad or mult- multi building developments there. And we also have a standard that from time to time. We find that there are conflicts, the standard requires the buildings be placed with within or some portion of building is placed. Uh, not more than ten feet away from from the highway ninety-nine right of way. And you know, the intent of that, of course, is to provide some scale and some pedestrian orientation in an area that would otherwise. Be uh, being hospitable, people walking. So it's a good design, urban design concept. Um, however, when we have an existing development or. Uh, an easement or some other constraint that doesn't make it possible to bring that building up. Um, to within ten feet, then the applicant is forced to go through a variance process and we've had. Um, at least two um. Cases where or two applications where that was the case just in the last year and one was the Ford dealership that was adding. Um, a shop and some facilities behind their existing dealership away from Portland Road. And another application that uh. That has come in for a similar situation where they're proposing to add a warehouse and storage building behind an existing. Office and and retail. So what we're proposing to do here is uh, make it easier to do the right thing. And so. Um, you know, maintain that standard of the build two line or the maximum setback, but provide an exception where an existing building. Utility easement, the dimensions of the lot, topography, or some other, you know, site condition makes compliance impractical or unfeasible. Interior setbacks for properties abutting institutional zones or community facility zones. The code is not say what the setback is. Uh, from interior lot lines that abut an institutional zone or community facility zone. Now, the code does say uh, what that setback must be when you're abutting other zones like commercial or residential, but not. Institutional community or community facilities. So uh. We're proposing to clarify that and specify that there is. Uh, no interior setback for development that it butts an institutional zone except. As is required for developments in residential zones. So. If you're in an institutional zone, you have to respect that residential setback. If I thought right. And. You know, typically that's five feet or eight feet depending on the zone or is required by special district regulations. Institutional uses or or uses that are allowed in institutional zones are uh, churches, schools. Um, libraries, public facilities, uh. City hall, fire stations, that sort of thing.
Mission right. Um, on the uh, unincorporated lands not subject to city zoning. On the interior setback for properties, um, do we have jurisdiction to do that as a city or do we have to? Or need to include Yamhill County in that?
Well, that's that's a good question. So uh, currently, you know, the the standard relates to city zones. And so if. You're, if the property is abutting an unincorporated area, then there's really no city zone to. Determine what that setback ought to be. So. It doesn't require coordination with Yamhill County necessarily, although we would certainly make them aware that we're we're considering the change. The reason for even considering this is that, you know, these are properties that may, if they're within the urban growth boundary, they may annex into the city at some point. So we'd like to have. Uh, sort of, you know, complementary um, standards or standards that work for that property as it comes in. So what we could do. Is uh, refer to, you know, what the the zoning would be upon annexation based on the comprehensive plan. That might be one approach.
Go ahead.
Were you trying to say something, Chris?
Oh, I was just wondering what the uh. What the interior yard um. Is for Yamhill County and if it's close to the cities anyway.
Yeah, well, we can research that, um, certainly come back with more information. I'm sure it depends on whether those are, you know. Farm zones or or exception lands, so we can look into that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, fence and wall height, combined height of fences and walls, and this is sort of a uh. A universal problem that jurisdictions, uh, particularly those that have hillside development. Have to deal with and we have situations, we have scenarios where, you know, the grading of the site creates. You know, lots that are elevated above other lots, um, you know, within the same block. And so there's a need to sort of address that where, you know, the uphill neighbor wants privacy, of course. And and you know, what can be the result is that you've got a retaining wall supporting their lot. Uh, that there's an elevation change to the lot below them. And then when you put a six foot fence on top of the retaining wall. You know, that neighbor is staring up at something that could be. Eight, ten feet tall. So currently we don't have really criteria to define, you know, what. How that's measured. I think we we look at it and and we have to consider that the two are. You know, combined and there's and there's a limitation on how how tall that can be. So. And I think sort of the operating. Definition or interpretation is that we've looked at where the fence is, you know, structurally. Sort of intermingled with or or uh, sitting at on top of the retaining wall. Um, or within the distance, within. Sort of the the same area where the footings of of the the fence would be within. You know, or or abutting the retaining wall, they're up against the retaining wall is what I'm trying to say. Then we think that that means that it's. Should be measured as a combined height. We really don't have any clear criteria. So. Um, you know, some jurisdictions will require that if you don't want the fence and the wall to be considered as one structure for height. The fence has to be set back some distance from the wall, like five feet, like a terracing of of the grade or of the hill. Uh, but we don't have any standards around that, so.
Missioner, right?
Yes.
Um, is there any state clarification that they uh, measure? The wall and fence combined or some of the walls will have soil on them? And technically they measure from the soil up. So can you find some clarification to see if uh? This is also a wall that is continuous with a fence on it? Or if it has soil and then the fence on it? Um. There are some things I've seen people do like create berms. And then put a fence on it and that was legal, they got around the codes. Um, I don't know if that pertains to this. And then if you have a property next to you that is pretty tall. And have like a parking lot next to your property, um, then you would probably want a six foot fence to hold anything back. From above you. Um. Are those the kind of things you're considering?
Yeah, so we're looking fairly narrowly just at the retaining wall and and the fence. So the berm scenario and other scenarios where someone is filling. Their lot in order to maintain, you know. To have more privacy or put a fence on top of it. That's not something that we're trying to address at this time, although maybe a policy issue that this commission would want us to. Research more, um.
Have you ever had anybody do that in the city? Um. They have a wall and and then uh. Yeah.
It happens in a lot of places that we probably don't even know about. Um, and and to make this, to make this issue even more complex, the building code. Determines height and we have another item, it's the next item, I think on the list where. Um, the maximum height of a fence under the building code that or or that. You can build without requiring a building permit is seven feet. And the development code sets a limit of six feet in residential zones. So. And then the building code measures height differently, it's I think from the base of the footings. And the zoning is looking at from grade. So. We're trying to unpack this, we think that there's a need to. Clarify how the combined height is measured and also. Uh, provide some consistency in how uh, height is regulated between the building code and the zoning code.
All right.
That's too open ended for code maintenance, we will totally understand.
You know, right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Mansfield here, it sounds like we need to define how uh, a fence is measured. Just as a generic and then interpret things from there.
Well, I think we have a good handle on how fences are. Measured for planning handling, it's when the fence and the wall are combined that we need to define.
Okay, I. But that does, I guess, from my standpoint and the advice that I'd be passing in is that doesn't matter, we've defined the height of a fence. Then that's the height of the fence. If I put it on somebody's head, I've put it on somebody's head.
Right. And then are we limiting that combined fence on top of somebody's head to six feet or are we allowing additional?
Fence can be six feet. If I throw it up in the air, it's still a six foot fence.
Okay.
Is how I see it.
That's how we see it too at this point, that.
If you buy a property and it's on a slope and you. Put up a retaining wall to make sure that your dirt doesn't go into your neighbor's yard, you can put a six foot fence on it. Okay, that's.
Yeah, Commissioner.
As a typical scenario that we're we're seeing and that we advise on. On, um, it's more cases than not, a front yard situation where someone is exploring. Um, putting in a retaining wall, but also wants to put a fence. And so we're measuring from the sidewalk, right, where their property line begins. And they may want to start that retaining wall right at the back of the sidewalk. And then on top of that, maybe they also want to put a fence. So.
Commissioner, don't we have regulations specifically around, I know we have regulations on fence heights specifically around corners on on streets. Could we? If that's the the worry case, can we establish something for? Height via from sidewalk for frontage on on main roads?
Yes, that may be part of it. And we do have different standards for front yards versus siding backyards. So front yards is four feet. But if you put that four foot fence on a two foot retaining wall right at the sidewalk. That combined height is six foot and it's going to feel like. You know, it's a six foot tall sort of intervention there, right? So my experience in other jurisdictions is that they do count the combined height. So we might want to look at other jurisdictions and what their typical practices in those scenarios.
Would that be helpful to this commission if we came back with some examples?
That'd be helpful with some examples. I made at first glance, I feel like we could address if that's the main issue with the the frontage, then you could address it as a.
It's both, it's both the side to side relationships and the and the front of the street.
Uh, Commissioner Wright, and is this fence height only pertaining to chain link wood, et cetera, but not green screen fencing?
Well, the standards apply to all of the above and that's a good. Uh, point that in some jurisdictions that have allowed taller fences or have allowed a taller. Combination of fence and wall, they'll specify that, you know, the the top. Portion of that, whatever the dimension is, it has to be transparent, you know, it has to be a lattice or or a chain. You can't, you can attain a certain height if it's not a. Completely opaque fence. So again, that's probably more than code maintenance. Again, that's probably more than code maintenance. If we wanted to get into that. Uh we can come back with some concepts and some examples and see what other jurisdictions do on the combined height. And then the commission can say, you know, if you want to move forward with that or uh carve it out as a, as a separate project. That was for everyone?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you. Uh so we've also talked about fence height. And uh the maximum height. Uh this is another one I think we benefit from coming back with some examples of what some of our neighboring jurisdictions allow. Or what they require for maximum fence height. But we are seeing more communities that allow fences of up to seven feet for privacy. Which. Not the case in my family, but uh we understand that population research that the human species is getting taller. Okay, um top of page six. This is a clarification to um. What we refer to as mixed use dwellings and mixed use dwellings are allowed um in the RP district. Uh which also happens to be the, um I think the only. Residential zone where uh you can have more than one main use on the lot. So there's been some confusion about. Okay, so I'm in the RP zone and I can have an office use and I can have a residence. Um and those can be in separate buildings or main uses, but uh the definition. Doesn't allow me to have those in the same structure, which kind of goes against common sense. If you want to have mixed use in the RP zone. Uh why wouldn't you be able to do that in, in an existing dwelling and make, and mix the uses? So proposing to. Specify in the definition, mixed use dwelling that allows both residential use and non-residential use in the same building. The last one on that page is a fairly um. Common issue and, and it's, it has created problems for some of our schools and, and other institutional uses where. If they're in a residential zone, the code limits the number of accessory buildings that you can have on the lot. To two. And so, you know, that, that makes a lot of sense if you're a, a single family house and you might have a. You know, workshop, a detached garage. That sort of thing. But if you're a school. Or an athletic facility, um you know, they typically have a need for more accessory structures. And so what we're. Proposing to do is come back with some. Language that would allow um. Either not limit the number of accessory structures for institutional use. Or set some metric that's based on lot coverage that allows it to scale based on the size of the lot. So. And we're interested in if the commission has any preference on either of those or, or other ideas.
Commissioner Mansfield, uh yeah, I think it would be good to maybe explore a few different options. Uh I think one of the big concerns is how does those additional structures affect the. Uh the residences around them. Uh what does that look like? I mean, it's very different to put in. A few different sheds for maintenance versus a multi-story additional structure. Um I think specifically something that was kind of mentioned here was like a pool house or uh space for athletic events. I mean, if. For example, C S Lewis in town decides they want to put in stadium seating for their. Soccer games where now people are able to sit twenty feet in the air and look behind in the next three neighborhoods.
That's a good point.
That might be a, a not okay thing. So uh the thing that jumps out to me is if we are going to make any change here, more than likely needs to. Be a C U P for any additional structures past a certain amount that we already allow. That way we can. Address the variances that are always going to pop up. Um you know, there's something very different between. Just wanting an extra space or an additional classroom or uh a maintenance structure versus. Wanting to put in a stadium in the backyard of the school that's going to see everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Mansfield. Other comments or?
Commissioner Wright. Um excuse me, Sherwood has a greenhouse plus um a couple of maintenance or at least one maintenance building. So that's really restrictive in our codes. Like only having two buildings per lot, um and I would agree with um Commissioner Mansfield. It would be also dependent on. Ratio of lot area to residential and what they're used for. I could see, and I'm wondering if uh instead of conditional use permit, if we can make up a grid. Or a table of some kind that can uh deal with that. Uh ratios or increases for requests for building per ratio of lot area. Might be an option. Cause I, I do realize conditional use permits uh also cost money. And if we're trying to help these uh. Schools and parks uh streamline their finances, that might help. Your decision though. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh so. Yeah, Jeremiah.
Come here just so the commissioners know currently accessory buildings in the residential districts. Are limited sixteen feet in height, except up to eight hundred square feet of accessory building may have a height up to twenty four feet. So I think. To Commissioners Mansfield's point of the height, there is some height requirements already in code, but we can definitely take a look at that too.
And I know this might be a silly question, Commissioner Wright. But are the pods that they sometimes drop because they have an excessive number of students? Are those considered under a, an accessory building?
So that's a good question. The manufactured dwellings or the, uh. Or temporary buildings? Are you talking about temporary or are you talking about permanent modular buildings?
Um permanent modular, modular buildings or temporary that are not officially the footprint. Um that they started out with.
Yeah, so there's one caveat to that if the modular or any other accessory structures, I think, within five feet. Of the main structure or another building that for development code purposes is consid- it's considered to be. Uh connected or attached.
Okay.
Looking around to make sure I've got that right. Part of the main building. So there are ways to do that without adding accessory structures under the code.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we will, uh when we return on this one, we'll have uh more information on the existing standards and limitations, including height. And some. Uh recommendations around how to scale this based on possibly ratios of lot coverage and also considering. Um at what point? Does uh the use require a discretionary review or conditional use permit? Okay, uh up at the top of page seven now, and this is the last page. Utility undergrounding exception for maintenance work and. Uh this is uh something that Public Works has and. And actually P G as well, it brought to our attention that uh undergrounding requirements. Well, we need to clarify that for maintenance, we have certain obligations under our franchise agreements to allow. Utility companies to do maintenance and sometimes that involves um replacing utility poles or relocating poles. And that that from a policy perspective shouldn't trigger undergrounding of utilities. It's really more about um development that. Triggers that requirement. Uh setback for signs. This is one that I'm going to hand off to Jeremiah. He has his head deep into this.
Deep, uh okay. Um currently in code, there's not a standard for any signs greater than twenty feet in height. Except if you have over ten acres and like two hundred feet of frontage, you can have sign up to thirty feet, I believe. Um and so looking for commissioners feedback if. Do you want to allow that or strictly prohibit it and make it clear in our code to. What to do with signs greater than twenty feet in height.
The note under that code concept is forty five, but it's twenty, it's twenty, right?
Double check.
I think it is.
I want to say it's twenty, but. This is for, just sort of for clarification, this is for major freestanding signs, so not attached to the building. And yes, it's tw- twenty feet is a current maximum height. But that doesn't, there, after twenty feet, there's no code provision outside of the ten acres and two hundred feet of frontage up to thirty feet. Not, and that one requires twenty feet from the front property line, ten feet from any interior property line. Um and so. Ten acre lots in the city are pretty rare unless you're George Fox or a bigger institutional use. Currently.
And you know. We're not, we'll verify this, but we don't believe there are many signs that are over twenty feet or if there are, they're not existing, non-conforming.
Commissioner Mansfield, so to, to boil it down, if someone has a sign that's less than thirty feet, but greater than twenty feet, apparently there's no restriction on what they can do with that sign.
The code is currently silent on that matter.
On the setback.
On the setback, yeah.
On the setback, so it's a view right up.
Yeah. A loophole. Has, has that popped up as an issue at all so far and, and why is this a maintenance issue?
There was a sign that was pretty close to it. That's right at, at twenty. So and depending on the grade, going back to our fence thing, the grade like slopes down. So it depends where it's at on the site too.
And so Commissioner Mansfield here, do we have a regulation similar to what is being proposed of? The setback being equal to the height of the sign for any other sizes?
Uh yes, so like up to the fifteen feet is this fifteen foot setback from the front property line. And then twenty, up to fifteen to twenties, at least twenty feet from the front property line. Those are all five feet from interior property lines. So it kind of, as you scale up, it, it goes to basically the sign height. The maximum is. The maximum setback. So it's twenty feet, you have a twenty foot setback. Actually, it's fifteen to twenty, you have twenty foot setback. Fifteen or eight to fifteen is fifteen feet setback. So it kind of scales up as you go up.
I, I'm happy with the proposed idea. Makes sense.
Thank you. So that's Commissioner Wright, do you have a comment or anyone else online?
Um I concur with Commissioner Mansfield on that. I think it's a very good uh. Alternative.
Okay, thanks for the feedback.
Or alternatively, we could let it ride until it becomes a problem.
Well, that's the thing.
Makes me want to go build a twenty five foot sign.
I think we would, we would ask for the gold interpretation staff.
Yeah, right.
Because it's silent on it, but it's something to address now before you have a.
A problem. Yeah, you know, someone asked. Now you ask question A and it makes us think about questions B, C, D.
Yeah.
And then, okay, so we need to take a look at that.
That's good.
All right, parking table, uh this is sort of, I think, an anachronism. Our parking table. Refers to dwelling, multifamily and uh quote multiple single family dwellings on a single lot. Well, that doesn't. That's not a thing anymore because we have middle housing. So we're proposing to amend. Parking table to delete the reference to and multiple single family dwellings on a lot. Cause we have standards for. Uh multiplexes and other middle housing types. Uh the Americans with Disabilities Act is regulated by uh the building code. And uh it's administered um both by the building official and uh. Public Works as they do um capital projects, there are requirements to go with. Sidewalks and improvements in the public right of way and there are requirements to go with buildings. And sites or accessibility, accessible routes on development sites. And it's not really within the purview of uh the development code or zoning, although we have references within Title fifteen to the ADA. Which can be helpful to applicants just to put them on notice that, you know, that these are requirements you also need to consider, even if you're not. You know, building anything at this time, but it has created some confusion in the past in terms of what standards apply. And this is an example, we have minimum path uh pathway widths. That might be five feet, I think in some cases, or yeah, five feet. And the ADA may uh only require. Three, three and a half feet or, or less. So we're just trying to avoid any confusion there and make sure that the division of labor is clear in our code. Um public walkways, minutes and paved surface. This is uh, I think it's just a conflict between two sections or two subsections of the same part of our code. So. We want to make sure it's pointing in the right direction and we've been referring to. Section S, I think, for easement width and paved surface with requirements. I don't, Brett, did you have anything to add to that or? Any other context?
That's pretty much covered. Just want to make certain that they're going to match be consistent.
Okay, it was just an inconsistency, so not changing the requirements. And the last item is a city engineer item, so I'll pass it over to Brett.
So this last item is related to permits for. Residential, specifically residential sidewalks, but not necessarily. It could be any sidewalk that's, that's, that's constructed and yet a permit is issued. There's a reference within the code that is part of getting that permit, that if the person that receives the permit. Chooses or requests the city engineer to go out and set the grade and line stakes. Basically, this is an old reference to when. Resources available to the city engineer included a surveyor to go out and set those constructions taking and things. That's not in common practice, nor has it been for. Years. So it's just a correction to eliminate that.
Thank you, everyone. Uh and thank you for bearing with us on the uh handing off of the laptop and the virtual. Zoom meeting troubleshooting and thank, I wanted to thank Faye for troubleshooting this and getting, yay. I hope everyone online, every, I hope the commissioners online were able to hear and see everything. Um we'll be coming back to the commission. Um on August fourteenth with draft code language and for those items that the commission asks for more information. We'll bring back our, our research on those items. Um so that, that concludes our presentation and, and the work session this evening. That, do you, Commissioner Wright?
All right, thank you. Um I now close legislative public hearing workshop. For the Planning Commission and staff for the review and providing feedback on the scope of the amendments. To Newburgh Municipal Code, Title fifteen Development Code, and one provision to Title twelve Streets and Sidewalks. Thank you, staff. Is there any items from staff at this time?
None at this time. Thank you.
Okay, are there any items from commissioners? Hearing none, I adjourn the Planning Commission meeting on seven ten twenty twenty five. At Public Safety Building, Newburgh, Oregon. Thank you, everyone.